August 16th, 2011, meeting of the Iredell County Board of Commissioners to order. At this point, I'll call on Commissioner Renee Griffith for our invocation, if you would, please. Ma'am?
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity that we have to meet together, and we thank you that wisdom comes from you. And when we lack wisdom, we can ask you, and you give it to us. And so tonight, we ask that you direct us and lead us as we make decisions for the county. We thank you for the men and women who are serving, men and women from Iredell County that are serving across the world. We thank you for them, protect them, and keep them safe. We thank you for the freedom that we enjoy in this country and the liberty to meet together without fear. We do thank you that you do give us wisdom tonight. We ask all these things in your son's name. Amen.
Okay. Join us in the pledge of allegiance to the flag of our country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Smith, are there any adjustments to the agenda coming from the staff this evening?
Ms. Chairman, there are no adjustments to the agenda.
Are there any adjustments to the agenda from the board? Hearing none, the floor is open for a motion to adopt the agenda as presented. Motion for approval from Mr. Mitchell. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. We have no presentation of special recognition and awards. It is my understanding that Mr. Walden has elected not to appear before us this evening. Has anybody seen him in the building? He's not outside, Mr. Grubbs? Okay. We'll move forward then. We'll move directly to the public hearings, and the first one is a, we'll declare the meeting to be in a public hearing in consideration of a closeout report on the 2008 Community Development Block Grant Economic Development for the Providencia USA Rail Spur Project. That is memo number two. Ms. Blumenstein?
Thank you. The 2008 CDBG Economic Development Block Grant for the Providencia USA Rail Spur is complete. We are required to hold a public hearing to receive any comments regarding the project. The CDBG provided $527,700 of the total $903,000 project cost. I'd like to point out that there were 56 new jobs added as a result of this grant. Thirty-nine percent of those jobs were very low-income households, less than 30 percent of the HUD median family income. Thirty percent were at 30 to 50 percent of the HUD median family income, or 22 jobs. Twenty-three percent at 51 to 80 percent, which is considered moderate level, 13 jobs. And only four jobs were above 80 percent of the HUD income level. So this job, this project was certainly a success as far as adding new jobs to the county. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions, Ms. Blumenstein? No, thank you, ma'am. This is a public hearing. Is there any public input, anyone that'd like to speak in regard to this? If not, we'll declare the public meeting, the public hearing closed, and the floor is open for a motion. And the request is to authorize the closeout of this fund.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve the closeout of the 2008 CDBG Providencia USL Rail Spur Project by Vice Chairman Norman. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. At this point, we'll call the meeting to be in public hearing again in consideration of the physical year 2012 Rural Operating Assistance Program Grant Application from the North Carolina Department of Transportation. Mr. Garrison?
Good evening. The purpose of this public hearing is to allow citizens to give input into our FY12 Rural Operating Assistance Program grant. The deadline for submitting this grant application is September 30th of 2011. The grant requires that we hold a public hearing to allow citizens input, but also the other required action tonight would be to allow the chairman of the county commissioners, the county manager, and the county finance officer to sign a certified statement that acknowledges the intended use of the funds and the program requirements. The funding this year is as follows: For elderly and disabled, it's $104,791. For employment, it's $57,770. And for rural general public, it's $122,162. The RGP, or the Rural General Public Funds, does require a 10% local match that we get from our passenger fares. The source of these funding, these funds are state funds, and I'll be glad to stop and answer any questions.
All right. Any questions, Mr. Garrison? All right. Yes, not, thank you, sir. Is there anyone in the audits who wish to speak in regard to this matter? You would come forward. If not, we'll declare the public hearing closed, and the floor is open for a motion.
Ms. Chairman, we adopt a certified statement allowing the chairman of the board of commissioners, the county manager, county finance officer to sign the required certification documents as acknowledgement of program and requirement.
Okay. That's adoption of this resolution, and for us to sign the documents. Any discussion on that motion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. We'll move to administrative matters. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Memo number four is a request from our transportation director, Ben Garrison, for approval of a drug and alcohol policy for ICATS in the finding of federal transit authority compliance in the compliance review audit report.
Thank you. The requested action tonight is asking the board to approve our FTA drug and alcohol policy and also approve an FTA findings of compliance with the federal requirements. We've had such a policy since our inception in 2003. At that time, though, when the system was formed, the policy was actually approved by our transportation advisory board. Since, there have been some major changes as of October of last year, and now these policies need to be approved by our governing board. We went through an audit back, October 18th of 2010. They came in and actually audited our program, and we received a notification letter from the NCDOT in January that we were in compliance with the exception of having our policy approved by the, by the board. This is a very detailed policy. They make a science out of collection, so I won't go into any of the details of that, but I will give you just a brief overview. This program is federally mandated. We have to have a drug and alcohol policy that, and program that is compliant with the standards. Our testing basically includes four types: pre-employment testing, random testing, and with random testing, we're required to test 25 percent of our pool of employees annually for drug and 10 percent for alcohol. We're also required to have a reasonable suspicion testing program as well as a post-accident. All of our employees that work in the system are defined as safety-sensitive employees, so we, both the people that do dispatching as well as people that drive our vehicles would fall under this policy. And I must say, I myself, about two weeks ago, name popped up, and I had to go for random drug testing, so the testing does work. So this policy is explained to all of our employees, and they receive a copy of the policy, and they also have to acknowledge a receipt of the policy. And this is a zero-tolerance policy. There's, our employees are aware that if you abuse drugs, you don't drive vans. So I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions, Mr. Garrison? It looks like all of the findings were pretty much related to paperwork, but you hadn't exactly followed their rules in the paperwork. That pretty much is a fair statement.
Yeah, if somebody filled, if somebody checked box three before they checked box five, then that was a...
Yeah.
They, they did actually go to both of our testing sites and found them to be, to be in compliance.
Fairly similar to the military. Is this just, you're following rules of evidence?
Right.
Any other questions, Mr. Garrison? If not, floor is open for a motion, and the request before us is approval of the FTA drug and alcohol compliance review audit and the drug and alcohol policy for ICATS that meets FTA standards.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve from Ms. Griffith. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Garrison.
Thank you.
Next item is memo number five, and this is, is a request for approval of budget amendment number five for the reimbursement to Central Volunteer Fire Department for water points associated with a recent ISO inspection. Ronnie Thompson, our fire marshal, is here to make that presentation.
Recently, Central Volunteer Fire Department went through a rerating with ISO, and to, in order to lower their rating, they had to set up some water points, and they are requesting reimbursement for the money that they had to haul gravel and things like that to set up these water points, in the amount of $26,000, $26,775. That money is in the fire tax budget under ISO improvements.
Do you believe that, that opening up these water points is going to be enough to improve their, their rating?
If I would guess, from what I saw when I was up there with their rating, they're going to get a significant decrease in their ISO rating.
Okay, good.
So you're satisfied they get a reduction in rating? It's not being questioned in your mind as to how, what it'll be?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's what these monies were for?
I just want to make sure that we're spending the money and getting what we'd asked for. It looks like we have. Okay. Any other questions? Not, floor is open for a motion. Ms. Chairman, move for budget amendment number five to reimburse the fire point, water point. Motion by Mr. Mitchell. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Thompson has memo number six as well.
Okay. Memo number six is for a lease for the Iredell County Farmers Association, for the lease of what we call Station 19 up on Stevenson Farm Road. There was some, some changes to the last agreement, which required insurance, and Tim Warren, who is president of the association, assured me that the association had the correct insurance agreements to qualify for this agreement. And he would be here tonight, but his wife had to have emergency surgery last night, so he's not here.
Any questions, Mr. Thompson? Not, floor is open for a motion for approval of this lease agreement.
Motion to approve a lease agreement.
Okay. Motion by Vice Chairman Norman. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Memo number seven is an item that was tabled at the last meeting. It's a request from LifeStar Ambulance Service LLC for approval of an ambulance franchise up to, with up to a three-year term. Mr. David Clor is to make that presentation.
Good afternoon. Memo number seven is basically to ask you to approve LifeStar Ambulance Service for a franchise in Iredell County to operate a convalescent ambulance service. Iredell County staff does believe that the call volume is sufficient to handle two convalescent services now, and will do nothing but increase in the future. We also feel that it will benefit these citizens of this county by having two convalescent services for the fact that they have an option in which service to use, and if, for example, if they had an appointment at 2:00, and one service was not able to accommodate that, there would be another option for them to do also. We also feel that it provides the county with a safety net in case one ambulance service ceases to exist for whatever reason, all that burden of calls would, excuse me, not fall back onto the county. We could share that with the other service until another time, we could accommodate other situations. Also, it would provide us more resources in case of a natural disaster or other large-scale emergency event. I'll be happy to answer any questions on that, and also, I believe, representatives from LifeStar and from New Care are here to answer any questions.
Mr. Clor?
Yes, sir.
Did you say our county was large enough to handle two services?
And we feel that way, yes, sir.
Okay. Would the call volume be enough for the two services?
We feel it will, yes, sir, because we do run some overflow calls from services like return trips and stuff that they cannot cover now, either being too busy or having an extended time to be able to cover those calls.
How are you presently doing with the, the one unit that's here now, or one company that's here now?
We've, we've had some compliance issues in the past. They are up to speed at this moment, and they are operating within our boundaries, as far as I know at this point.
Is that why we're looking at another, or was it because?
No, sir. We were approached by LifeStar Ambulance Service, had nothing to do with any issues that we've had to deal with, with New Care or not. They approached us.
Okay.
I think they contacted Mr. Jackson first, and that started the process running at that point.
Is there a certain point that we want to look at, how many different companies we're going to have in here, or have you looked at that or discussed that?
Well, at this point, I mean, we've not really entertained that idea. I believe if you had nine show up at one time, we might want to look at that. But with the call volume the way it is, and the population getting older, the convalescent transport business is going to continue to increase, it would be hard for me to say right now exactly how many would be a perfect number to have without knowing the future and what, how many calls we'd have in that area.
Okay. Any other questions, Mr. Clor? Mr. Clor didn't have an opportunity to speak to you before the meeting. I apologize.
No problem.
In the interest of fairness, some other comments have been made in regard to this issue. In the interest of fairness, at this point, I'm going to give the representative from each company three minutes to, to make any points that they felt like they didn't bring to our attention in the previous meeting.
Okay.
And at that point, after that, they've concluded their remarks. And if we have any questions, the board's going to take their own liberty to ask as many questions like, and at the conclusion of that, we're going to take a vote.
Sure. No problem. Thank you.
At this point, I'll call on, I'll call on Mr. Corbett first, if you'd like to make any remarks. Please limit your remark to three minutes. Our clerk's going to start the clock at the beginning of your remarks, Mr. Corbett, and then the board will ask you questions.
Thank you. Three key points here. Number one is, is Mr. Clor just referenced, well, he feels there's enough call volume. I have not heard specific numbers, and I shared that with you last time. In, excuse me, in February, we hired Matt Ronaldi as our director, Dr. Falstad, and Mr. Clor interviewed him themselves, and we started, we ramped it up till we had eight trucks for service. That was totally too much. We've cut it back to six. Today, we ran five. We run five routinely. And again, I challenge, and I would love to see, the documentation that says there is enough calls for two services. All I've had to hear so far is anecdotal, we think so. We've talked to our, our customers, hospitals, nursing homes, and all are very pleased with what's currently happening. We've done that research. Number two is I keep hearing, and I can't understand it, that this is a free-market franchise, that anyone who applies gets in. Mr. Norman, your question well-made. What if two more apply next meeting? Then what you going to do? If the franchise is broken, fix the franchise, table this, and then consider it. In Winston-Salem, there are two services, LifeStar and New Care. The county commission, every year, January, February, any service can apply to come in, and they gauge it if there's a need. There have been services who have applied, and they have been told there is no need. I recommend, if, if the franchise is broken, in other words, anybody can come in, why have a franchise? So my challenge to you, or my question to you, is if it's broken, look at the Winston model. Take time to do this right. Third point is, is this, and, and please understand where I'm coming from. When Matt was hired, we really wanted to raise New Care to a higher level than ever. We talked with Dr. Falstad. He gave us things that we should do, and that included starting a dispatch center. We invested heavily in that, and we've done that. It's a local dispatch center that gives us better response times. We started that in early July. Give us a chance to do that. We've invested in equipment, in staff, training officers, all these things. And, and, and again, we've done everything Dr. Falstad asked, and then all of a sudden, it's, and please don't take this wrong, but it's like a kick to us in the stomach, well, you've done it all, but we're going to bring in something else. Two agencies here will be negative, there's not enough business. I have looked at the numbers. So I encourage you at this point, you don't have to vote, the county manager said that last week, you don't have to do it. Be cautious. Thank you.
Any questions, Mr. Corbett? That's fine. Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Can I speak to one point of this statement?
Yes, sir.
The first statement, as far as that myself and Dr. Falstad interviewed Mr. Ronaldi, that was the only candidate they said that they had in line to do that, and we didn't actually interview him, we sat down for a meeting with him.
Okay.
So it wasn't an actual formal interview that myself or Dr. Falstad did.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. I'll invite anyone from LifeStar, I'll limit it to anyone who's employed by them or in management.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, board. As we mentioned a couple of weeks ago, our, our objective is to begin operations here. We're looking to start with three ambulances and hope to be up in, in service in about 90 days. And I'd like to field any questions you might have at this time.
Any questions?
Sir, looking at your numbers, do you think we have enough business for you to be here?
It's, it's certainly tighter than it is in Forsyth County, but for us, it works.
Okay. I asked, I asked you this question at the previous meeting, but it is your intention to provide advanced life support, and you'll be operational to do that within the, this 90 days you're speaking of?
That is our goal, to, to be able to offer that service in 90 days as well.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, floor is open for a motion, and the request is to grant this franchise to LifeStar.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend that we, or I move that we accept the county staff recommendation that the Iredell County Board of Commissioners award LifeStar Ambulance, an ambulance franchise for a term of no greater than three years.
No greater than three years. Any discussion on that motion? I'll confess that in my own mind, I was, I guess, somewhat in the middle of different thinking on this thing. I was, I was sensitive to the fact that New Cars, New Care's made considerable investment in the county, and the level of their service has improved, and torn between that and a libertarian streak belief in free markets, and at the end of the day, my belief in free markets won out, so I will vote in support of this motion. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Oh.
Motion carries four, one. Okay.
Ms. Chairman, memo number eight is a request from Mecklenburg County for consent to purchase land in Iredell County, and that is going to be presented by William Allison, our interim planning director.
Mr. Chairman, Mecklenburg County has filed a request through its real estate services department, asking consent from Iredell County in order to purchase 2.3 acres within the county along Greystone Road off Shears Road. Per general statute 153A-15, Mecklenburg County must have permission from the Iredell County Board of Commissioners to purchase land located within the county. This particular 2.3 acres, which lies just across the county line, is only a small portion of the greater tract, which includes a former subdivision now under foreclosure. It is the intent of Mecklenburg County to purchase these properties for a park and other open space needs. If you have any questions on any of that, I'll be glad to try and answer it. Thank you.
Any questions, Mr. Allison?
Are they purchasing, purchasing this land for fair market value?
At the present time, I am not, I don't believe they have divulged the cost or the price. Mecklenburg County has not shared that with me, so. The property currently is held under Fifth Third Bank, and it's under foreclosure, and there, Mecklenburg County has, has a contract to purchase this land. The contract expires the end of this month, I believe, but they have not divulged or indicated what the...
So the county does not own this land?
I, no, ma'am. It is, it's currently owned by Fifth Third Bank. It's this...
They just have to get permission?
The statute requires that, that they have to have the county's consent.
I wasn't sure if they were purchasing it from us, or, okay. Thank you.
It'd be an open, their proposal is for it to be an open park?
Yes, sir. Mr. Robertson, the, the plan does, the preliminary plan does show what they call both passive and active recreational uses. There's, currently, there's a walking trail in there now that's over a mile long. It's the culmination of three different properties that'll make this entire park, but the, it's very early in the plans, and they've really not shared anything of any great detail with us.
This was originally part of a subdivision that is under foreclosure. This, I just indulge me just a minute.
Yes, please.
Mr. Allison, this may appear to be somewhat of a dumb question, but by granting this request to Mecklenburg County, their request is limited only to this parcel of property.
Absolutely.
If they wanted to buy a subsequent piece of property, they would have to come back to it.
It, it just applies to this little 2.3 acre strip, this, this just above the county line.
I'm sure you understand my skepticism, skepticism of the motives of Mecklenburg County.
Absolutely.
You've never been skeptical before.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you, sir. Any other questions? If not, floor is open for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we approve this request.
Okay. Motion for approval from Mr. Robertson. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Memo number nine is a request from the Health Department, represented by Donna Campbell, for approval of budget amendment number six in the amount of $100,000 for a school nurse funding initiative.
In the past, the state has sent the school nurse funding initiative funds directly to the school systems in the county, and then the legislature this year, they decided that the funds had to flow through the Health Department, and so we're coming to you asking approval to receive the $100,000 in school nurse fund initiative funds and to... initiative funds, and to be able to subcontract with the Iredell State School Schools and the Mooresville graded school district for one nurse each. There are already nurses that have been in these positions before, and they've just changed the funding route, so it has to go through us now.
Ms. Campbell, I don't question your ability at all to handle this money, but do you know why they changed that? It just seems like there's another layer of procedure that has...
I have asked the state, and they do not know why the...
There's no additional oversight that you provide?
We have to do the subcontracts. The state nurse consultants are gonna still continue to do the reviews, and we have to, they'll invoice us every month, and then we'll pay the invoice. So it'll flow through us, and then once we pay for it, it'll be deposited in our account by the state. So it does require a little bit more oversight, but it makes no difference in improving the school nurse fund initiative.
Did I understand, so you're responsible for hiring the nurses? Is that...
The school system will subcontract with them.
Okay.
So Mr. Pope has already seen our contract, and it assures that they'll have the appropriate training and the malpractice insurance.
Okay.
And they're already school employees.
Okay.
Is there the potential that the state could then stop this funding, and since we've approved it, they no longer, because, did you say you had to pay first and then be reimbursed? So is there the potential that the state would then not refund you for your payment, and we would be left holding the contract?
Well, we've signed, we'll sign an agreement with the state for the $100,000. So I'll have a contract with them. It's called an agreement addenda, and so that's what they're agreeing to pay us. So...
Have we ever had an agreement with the state that they not paid what they agreed? Has that ever happened?
Not through the Health Department that I'm aware of, in an agreement addenda. Now, they do do, like if Medicaid changes and things like that, or if funding ends, it does, it could change, but to my knowledge, this should be a pretty much a flow-through, and I'm not aware of it having the potential to be cut, but anything could happen.
This may be a way of lining education dollars for genuine education and health dollars.
Maybe.
Through...
To answer your question, Mr. Robertson, there are instances where they have agreed by legislation to fund certain things, and then because of a downturn in the economy, they have chosen not to do so, such as capital money for schools, which arrives at corporate income tax. Those monies decreased during the economic downturn, but they did not become nonexistent. But there have been instances where we didn't get any of that money. But I don't know of one specifically where they entered into an agreement to pay us that they didn't pay us.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
I look at this, Mr. Chairman, as just another excuse for Governor Purdue to say it's a cut in education, 'cause it took money from education, and that's going to help. And you watch, it'll be a cut.
Yeah.
And it's just a pass-through, is all it is. You're probably right. Okay. There are no other questions? Floor is open for a motion.
Motion to approve Budget Amendment Number Six.
Motion by Vice Chairman Norman for Budget Amendment Number Six. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Ms. Campbell also has memo number 10.
I need to ask for your approval of a new code and fee for a high dose flu vaccine. That will be for people 65 years of age and older, and also the fee for the administration of that vaccine. And we're also asking to decrease our flu mist vaccine charge, because our costs have decreased. So I have two new CPT codes and the associated fees, and then the flu mist vaccine fee change.
Okay. Any questions?
I just want to thank Ms. Campbell for making sure that any increases don't become burdens of the taxpayer, and any decreases are passed along to the folks who are paying basically what's a user fee for the service, which is exactly what we've asked the Health Department to do. So thank you very much for bringing this before us.
Thank you.
Okay. Floor is open for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the new CPT codes and associated fees.
Okay. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell.
Memo number 11 is a request from Ecom, excuse me, for the approval of a 10-year sublease between the county and the state for the installation of equipment on the Fox Mountain Viper Tower.
Good evening. What we have for you is a sublease agreement with State Highway Patrol. This will allow our communications center to install antennas, transmitters, and have access to a transmitter building that's gonna be erected on Fox Mountain. This is part of the statewide Viper system, which provides communications across North Carolina. State Highway Patrol is already using it. We do have some other agencies in this county that also use it, including our sheriff's office and one or two other agencies. So this is a good thing, and something that will benefit Iredell County and a positive partnership between our communications center and the state.
Okay, any other, any questions, Mr. Jackson?
Mr. Pope, are we looking at this?
Yes, and also our insurance agent.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, the floor is open for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve from Vice Chairman Norman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson.
Memo number 12 is a request from the Tax Department for the approval of the July 2011 refunds and releases, and there are no county commissioners mentioned on these reports.
Okay. Floor is open for a motion.
So moved.
Motion for approval from Mr. Robertson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
And the final administrative matter is a request for approval of the August 2, 2011 minutes.
Okay. Floor is open for a motion for approval of the August 2, 2011 minutes. Move for approval. Motion for approval, Mr. Mitchell. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, next we have announcement of vacancies occurring on boards and commissions. The Troutman Planning Zoning Board, ETJ, is one announcement. That'll be a matter on our next agenda. We have no appointments to boards and commissions unless someone has someone from the reminder Unfinished business? I'll take an opportunity to say that the merger that Mr. Swan from Crossroads Behavioral Services brought to us last week, that joint meeting of the three boards in that catchment area will occur this Saturday, and I'll be in attendance there. And I would like the opportunity, Mr. Smith, to brief the board at our next meeting, to make sure that they're in agreement in which direction we're heading in that thing, and if they're not, then make me aware of that, so we can modify our approach. Anything else on the unfinished business?
I'd like to ask the county manager a question.
Yes, sir.
There's been some articles in the paper here in the last few days about the emails. Is it your interpretation that if someone sends me or any of the other members an email at our personal account, that that is public information?
My understanding, without doing a little bit of research on the subject, would be that potentially, if you're making policy types of decisions, or a decision that might have an impact on the business of the county, that could potentially be used, or that could be potentially viewed as a public document. But I'd really like to look into that a little bit further, if I could.
Well, I haven't been in practice of doing that, but I do get a tremendous amount of emails in favor of or in opposition of issues we've got. And I was just wondering if I'm supposed to forward those to all in local news medias, or do we have to? I'd like some interpretation on that.
I'd be glad to get something together for you, Mr. Mitchell.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else? Public comment period? New business? County managers report.
I only have one thing to report tonight. I wanted to bring something out. Becky Gallacher, who is our elections director, has recently received her national certification. Just wanted to bring it to your attention, and that is called, in her profession, a CERA, Certified Elections/Registration Administrator. Becky's put a lot of time into receiving this certification, and it's a combination of course requirements, experience, and going to different conferences and workshops. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. It's taken her, I believe, six years to do it, so pretty big investment. That's all I had to report.
Okay. Well, congratulations, Ms. Gallacher. She does a fine job. For no other business to come to our attention, I would move we go into closed session under General Statute 143, 31811A4, Economic Development. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Motion carries unanimously. There will be one action taken as a result of our closed session. Just point out, I'd offer, I'd like to make a motion in regard to the agreement we have with Engineered Centered Component Products, and I would offer a motion to approve a modification to the agreement for Engineered Centered Products, establishing incentive over a five-year period based on a minimum of a $9 million investment, which was equate to $31,855, and a max investment of $10,035,000 contingent upon a contract being executed within 180 days, or amended within 180 days. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Uh, if there's no further business, I offer a motion that we adjourn.